Okay, I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is June 17, 2025. Just wanted to thank everybody in attendance. Not a whole lot on agenda tonight. We'll be wrapping up the budget, consideration of that. And maybe discuss a couple economic development programs and then we'll go into closed session. So with those three basic items, I will take consideration of the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Sound as if the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion is approved. Next item is consideration and adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 25, 26. And I think Amy, we have been working on this for a while. I think Amy and Eric have done a great job and all the other people supporting it, especially the committees, the budget committees. Y'all did a great job and I hope we can wrap it up tonight. So if anything else you want to add, I'll turn it over to you, Amy.
Yeah, just real briefly, was having a conversation with the town clerk the other day and we realized that we were missing funding in there to pay the board of elections for this fall. So moved some things around. We have a contingency amount in there. Just took some of that to go ahead and re-appropriate for that. So that is reflected in the materials before you tonight. That is what, that's different from what we showed you two weeks ago. Other than that, it's every same thing. It's the things that were presented by the manager, a few capital project changes that we reviewed last time we met, and then this one new item for the board of elections.
Okay.
And then if you do want to consider this, just recall there are four items that require adoption. So that is the adopting the budget ordinance, which is your annual appropriation, adopting the resolution, which requests Wake County to collect the levy for you, adopting the resolution for the CIP, not committing. That's why it's a resolution, not an ordinance. Not committing to that. Just saying that this is our official plan. And then finally, the capital project ordinance, which you are committing funds for those capital projects until those projects are complete.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, find me. Eric, anything you want to add before I turn it to the board for discussion and consideration?
Good evening to the board and all those tuning in. Just thank you all for your questions. We did receive a few inquiries from the community, just kind of like email or phone call about certain things. So I'm always excited when people actually read a budget document and ask a question and those questions were answered. And so we encourage everyone even anticipate or we're hopeful for an adoption of the budget that if you have any questions about how your tax dollars are being spent, feel free to reach out. If you have any questions about programming, anything related to our fiscal administration, we're an open book. We're always receptive to those. And so even though the opportunity to ask questions about the budget has passed, your, the opportunity to engage us on how we're spending your tax dollars and how we're serving the community never closes. And so throughout the year, please feel free to engage the board, staff members on topics that are near and dear to you as a community member. And so I just wanted to make sure I stated that. But I don't have anything, any additional information to add. Some of you, I did speak with you and answer some questions about certain things within the budget between the last meeting and I hope that you did receive the answers you were looking for on that.
Any questions for the manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Amy? All right, I will thank you, Amy. Thank you. Like I said, you guys did a great job so far, so appreciate that. Hope we can take it over the finish line and I will turn it over to the board for discussion, questions, talk them on yourselves or entertain a motion.
I moved to adopt the budget ordinance of the, for the fiscal year lasting from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
Okay. Also, all the bullet points you include in all those?
Yeah, do we have to do those separate? Do we need a separate for each one of those or?
That's up to.
Normally we do them separately.
Okay.
But I don't know. I would need to pull how it is.
We'll just do them separately.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
So you're doing, you're doing the first bullet.
We'll do them separately.
You're doing the first.
Right.
So the motion is for consideration, adoption for the first bullet there, which is the budget ordinance fiscal year 25, 26, right?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion second. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye. Any oppose? Sounds as if the ayes have it. They do have it. Motion approved. Is there another motion?
I move to resolution authorizing the Wake County Department of Revenue to levy and collect property taxes.
Okay. So we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion second. This is to authorize Wake County. Is any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Sound as if the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Motion approved. Thank you. Is there another motion?
I move resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2025 through 2030.
Did you say capital plan?
For the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2030.
Okay, so that's the fourth bullet?
Let's see, I think.
Third.
Third one, okay. Maybe different from mine. Okay. Cool. All right, got a motion second. Is there a, any more discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Sounds as if the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you. And is there another motion?
I make a motion to adopt the capital project ordinance dated June 7th, 2025.
Okay, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Sounds as if the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Motion approved. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. Thank you, Eric. So we do have a budget. So Town Hall will stay open July 1st. So thank you very much for all the hard work you put in it. And again, thank you to the committee, the committee working with them on that. And that worked out well this year. Working with the committee worked out well. Good. Okay, the next work session item is discussion of town support for economic development programs with the Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Development Association. And I think Michael, you going to head that up?
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to you, Michael.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm just here tonight to kind of facilitate further discussion around the town's support and partnership with two of our key community partners, the Roseville Chamber and the Roseville Downtown Development Association. Our partnership with these groups is focused on supporting existing businesses and entrepreneurs here in town. Marketing Roseville is a great place to do business, hosting events, providing networking opportunities. The RDDA, the Downtown Development Association, has a more specific focus on the development and appearance of downtown specifically in and around our Main Street. In your packets tonight, just for reference, staff has included our prior year's agreements with these organizations and then also proposed agreements for this next coming fiscal year. And as this has been a fluid process over the last couple months, things have been changing here and there and tonight too. I just wanted to point out a couple changes to touch upon even to those agreements in your, the proposed agreements in your packets before we continue the discussion. With the Chamber of Commerce, you'll see in the proposed agreement an in-kind contribution valued at $31,000. We arrived at that looking at the current entire building where the chamber is housed right now. And so as we know, this building will be owned by the town beginning July 1st with the merger with the fire department. And so in more recent conversations, the chamber let us know that there is only need for space for one office at present and then also another office will continue to be subleased to a local business. So we can adjust that in-kind contribution down from the $31,000 to I think we determined approximately $6,200. So this was kind of something that was in discussions to propose to offer the chamber that the town would offer that space rent-free, but we did want to have that value in there to show that contribution. And that's the big revision there. Looking at the, the proposed agreement with the Downtown Development Association, we included a map to go with that agreement. And this, this map, I can kind of bring here. So this map will be included just to kind of show where the Downtown Development Association will be focused on, which businesses it will be working with. And then also this map kind of shows where businesses are going to be eligible for the facade improvement program. So these are all our main corridor, you know, main intersections with Main Street, Young Street, Rogers Road, of course, Burlington Mills Road, and then a little bit of Jonesville there too. So, so we're including that. And then also there's been an additional $1,000 request. So the total request for funding is $7,500, up from the $6,500 that you'll see in your packets. But I just wanted to mention those. I'm here to kind of provide any additional background and answer any questions. I know we've started some discussions and we can continue the discussion tonight. We did want to get some feedback and input about these partnerships moving forward. And so nothing has to be approved tonight. This is simply a work session. But ultimately, I think we want to work towards new agreements with these, with these organizations and think about how we might want to support these groups moving forward. So that's all I have to kind of kick it off for now and we're open to.
I have a question, clarification on the space, which is now down to $6,200 because if I'm not mistaken, if this is for two offices, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that I had a conversation with their chairman and it was one office in the foyer. Am I incorrect in that?
And the chairman is here tonight. If we want to.
Yes.
Maybe ask for an updated, the latest, and I don't know. Do we want to bring the chairman forward to answer that question?
I would like, yes, because.
Yeah?
Is it, I'd like to ask him because it was, what, can you explain to me, is it two offices or is it one office in the foyer?
Yeah, one office and then the reception area is what we use. And then once a month, the conference room.
Okay. And so, and a tenant will also be in a second office?
As of today, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. And that's the number reflected for the two, the 62?
Yes, and we kind of worked with the town attorney to see what the planning department is currently paying at market rate at that 211 Main Street and kind of use, use those figures and then looked at an estimate of the square footage for an office and then the tenant space there.
Madam Commissioner, the, the draft lease and the square footage is for the two exclusive offices. The sublet space, which we're calling Suite A for the moment, and the Chamber of Commerce's exclusive office, which we're calling Suite D. There are two other office areas. They're all served off of that central lobby. The central lobby is not part of the premises. It is part of the larger building and is common area. That's the way the current draft shared with staff is written. That may need to change if the chamber needs exclusive use of the reception or lobby area. I don't know how that lays out.
Right. And I'm only asking for clarification because I was hearing two different things and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding where we stand right now today.
Question for you. Is the in-kind donation something that we may continue doing as a partnership? Or is it just for this year?
I might defer to the town manager.
Yes, so it doesn't, with the, the in-kind, in the in-kind donation, which is essentially rent, right? Is rent. It doesn't make sense for us to provide funding for them to give us funding back. Like, and so it's essentially, it's just accounting for the value of the space and we always try to account for it at market rate. So that even though there's not a transaction happening, it's just accounting for the value of it, right? And so it's not our intention to charge rent with someone that's considered to be a partner, right? It's, it's not just a tenant. You know, we partner with them in several different ways, several different events, especially when it comes from economic development throughout the year. And so that's the position right now.
Thank you, yes. So I met with the Mayor's Association meeting last night, Wake County Mayors, and I asked this question about what others are doing. Some towns are just providing them space. And, and one town was charging them a dollar. But they never heard the in-kind thing. So I don't know if anybody other than us is doing that. And that's new for us this year too.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if that's a new standard or what day, but I don't know if it's consistent Wake County towns doing in-kind. And I was telling them that we were told we had to do it market value of the space. And, you know, some of them hadn't, hadn't heard of that either. So I'm not sure we're all doing the same, but you know, I think we're doing the right thing. It's just, it's just something new even for us, you know, and for a lot of people.
The, the only thing that is happening in-kind is how we're explaining it for accounting purposes. It's support for the chamber. If the chamber did not receive this support, the chamber would be looking for space somewhere else in Roseville and paying rent. We could hand them the check to go find that space or we could give them the space for free in this location. That's what's happening. But we're accounting for what that support is. That, that is all in-kind means. It's an accounting. All of the town's leases need to be for space that is determined by the town to be surplus. The board in 2018 authorized the town manager to make the surplus determination without board approval and approve leases for terms of one year or less upon that determination. So the manager determines that it's surplus first because otherwise it just would not be able to be made available to a private company. Hopefully that's happening everywhere, but everywhere is using different terms. It would be just as easy to have reported at the Mayor's Association meeting that we're providing the space for free. It would also be true.
That's true. Exactly right.
It's also free.
Exactly right. But we'll provide it with a number.
We're, we're accounting for the total support that the town in partnership is providing to the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, some of them were just given office space in Town Hall. They could just have a office in Town Hall and they're just working out of Town Hall. And wasn't charging them anything. But I guess all square footage has, you know, I, I got, I got the understanding that we are required to somehow show the market value and charge them market value or give them in-kind donation for market value.
The town in every city is required to not give private parties public money. So if the space is space that the town could have used for the planning department or for the new engineering division and we instead give it to a private nonprofit, we need to account for how that's being used for a public purpose. If we have surplus space, then it's purely an accounting for what its value is. And in this case, this is space that perhaps next year would be used for engineering. The lease and the support is for a one-year term and it does not extend beyond that. Otherwise, it would need to come to the board for a, for a report, for a report and vote and also would need to be published in the newspaper.
I did have a conversation with the chairman, Adrian, and told him, and told him that we are excited to see what the chamber is doing and that I would like for them to come and report to us more often since this is a year that prayerfully will be a great growth for them with all the businesses coming online. So I did share that sentiment with him that we would like to hear more in depth of what's happening with the chamber.
And I think if there's any additional feedback or input to provide to the town manager or myself over the next couple of weeks and we can start to fine tune the agreements and then bring them back to the board and continue talking and thinking about it and seeing where we land.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Michael. I'm here.
Was there any questions on the other one, the Downtown Development Association? All the answers, all the questions from the board was answered on that one?
I'll just say that I understand the facade improvement program. They have several applicants, so they intend to award funds this year for that. So those funds will go to good use and they have stabilized their board. They have some very good people on the board. So we should see some very good, exciting things coming out of the RDDA in the next 12 months. So I think they're very worthwhile to continue to support.
Okay. Anything else, Michael?
I don't think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Okay, that's the only item that got left on the agenda is the closed session. Eric, I know you're in the chief here. Is any, any updates you want to give on the incident from yesterday that you can share with the public?
We're encouraging the public to, to check, to review the press release that we released in, in collaboration with the Raleigh Police Department, City of Raleigh Public Information Office. Thanks, thank you to them and for everyone that responded and had collaborated with our police department on that day. If you were in and around downtown and you saw that Wendell was present, the Sheriff's Department was present, SBI, Wake Forest, all of our partners in safety were present. And they did, they responded in a very timely fashion to the incident that, you know, was a moving incident, right? And so, so we're encouraging the community to review the press release for it. There may be more. And then also there is news coverage that has been taking place. I am sending, sending you all an email to link, what they linked to all that news coverage, but most people are seeing it on WRL, ABC 11, News 17, Fox 8, and also Wake Weekly. The officers are doing well. There were no injuries, no casualties or major injuries on the part, on the part of the, the community member that was engaged by police and also by, with our police officers. And so that's good news. The police chief will provide an investigative update to you all in closed session to see if you have any questions. But in general, when it comes to the facts and details of the incident, the press release is the best resource for that. And as more information becomes available, we'll provide an update on those things. I don't know if chief would like to, I think that kind of covers all of the public information. I hope I framed it well. But we will, can in closed session provide an investigative update and see if you have any more kind of detailed questions. But in general, it's an ongoing investigation in which we do, we cannot comment on anything other than what's captured in public documents. We know that there is, was an arrest made and there is a charge. There's not a conviction, but there is a charge. And so those documents are readily available throughout and are public information and can, are circulating if you watch the news. And so that information is pretty much all that we have and all that we can offer on the incident.
Any questions from the board, Eric or the chief?
Yeah. If I could, if I were to add in anything other than that, I would just say thanks to our community members. At a later date, well, I guess we can talk to other details, but this incident showed that safety isn't just, it is our police department's responsibility, but we are one of the safest places to live in Wake County and in this country and on this planet because everyone responds to an incident and several people within our community contributed to the safe resolve of that situation and that. and that I'm very prayerful, I'm very thankful that despite how the incident went, it could have been much worse based off things that you see going on, on our, when you watch the news. We all watch the news in the morning. And so I'm thankful for our police department and thankful for our residents and our community members that responded and may have contributed through either taking action or not taking action. And so when some, I think there were, were moments in the incident where some community members and they chose to lock their door, they chose to contribute, but also most importantly, people got out of the way and allowed the professionals to do what they do best, which is to resolve these kinds of incidents in a peaceful manner, as peaceful as possible manner. And so I'm thankful for that. And so I wanted to just thank our community for that, for their patience and for their being, for their awareness and for being supportive, so.
Anything else? Yeah, I would just like to echo kind of what you said. Really, you know, it's a scary incident.
Yes.
I mean, you know, firing on police officers that close to elementary schools and just out in the general public where businesses are running businesses and things is really, is really a scary situation. But, you know, our officers were able to apprehend the suspect without lethal force, which I'm very proud they were able to do that. Very, very good job with that. And our officers really put their lives on the line every day for our residents. And, you know, and when they put on that uniform, I can't praise them enough for all the work they do and the things they do. But most importantly, I think, you know, and I find it amazing because I didn't, I know when the chief first told me no one was injured, I found, you know, I kind of found that was hard to believe, really. I just thought you may not have known anybody yet because, you know, that's kind of hard to believe, but it wasn't. And, and it's really, that's really an important point. But, but also I think you mentioned, I just want to thank the citizens too, the people for putting trust and their respect and, and all the, all the, the faith they put in our, our community and our public servants because, you know, our fire, our police, our EMS, all those folks, you know, they put on their uniform every day to respond to our people and they do a great job. And that was demonstrated, you know, this week for sure, very much so. And, and, you know, I think, I think we all can sleep, you know, restfully knowing, you know, we got the servants that put their lives on the line to protect the citizens here and can't say no more about that. I mean, that was just amazing. And really, really you guys did an amazing job able to apprehend somebody without no one getting. I, I can't believe anybody didn't get cut with glass, you know? No glass cuts and stuff because there's a lot of windshield, you know, shattered and glass shattering and stuff like that. But no one was injured, so that's, that's amazing. So I just want to thank the chief and all the officers. I know some of them was in the line of fire and we're going to appreciate them for that. We're going to have to do something special for them to appreciate the ones that was actually, actually taking fire. So, you know, we got to appreciate them for that for sure. So thank you, chief. Anything else from the board? We, we got a need for a closed session, I think. Does someone have that, that motion for closed session?
I move to enter closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 dot dash 318 dot 11A 6 personnel.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
If I could offer an amendment to that, if we could add subsection 3 for attorney-client privilege to discuss Roseville v. Edens Family LLC and also subsection 7, which is for the board to receive an investigative report of alleged criminal activity.
I'd like to add those to my motion.
Okay, so we got addition. Who's second it?
I second it, sir.
You second it all with addition?
I second it.
Okay, so we got a motion, a second for a closed session. Is there any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Sounds like the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. We will go into closed session. This is a recess, so we will come back out. But we're not planning any business when we come back out, but we will come back out from a general. Thank you for recess. Thank you.